Since you don't have any donuts.
My apologies.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Please take attendance.
Five council members, our president, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Wenda will not be here tonight. We're unsure about Councilmember Jethir Mural.
Okay. Action to approve the agenda. Entertainer motion to approve the agenda. Move second. Please call the roll.
You, Mayor?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Second?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Okay. Open forum. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council on an item out of tonight's agenda? Then we'll move on. And that brings us to item five, the 3M PFAS mitigation plan update. And Paul, did you introduce?
Yes, thank you. Here with us is Jim. Jim's, I forget the specific title, the manager?
Plan manager.
Plan manager for 3M here in Brookings. He's been with us here about a year and a half now and here to give us an update on the efforts regarding PFAS there at 3M facility. They've been working on this for almost a year now, working with the state as well as the city. And so Jim, if you'd like to go ahead and start with the presentation and then offering the opportunity for the council to ask any questions.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to provide an update here tonight for the council meeting. Okay. So just real quickly, for those who weren't present at the council meeting in April, I was here at the meeting about six months ago. I'm going to provide just a quick summary of events that kind of brought us up to this point before I get into an update on the slides that I have here. So picture here is the east side, or excuse me, the north side of our plant, kind of on the top picture on the left side there. And we had a leak in our firewater system. And when it was detected, we took actions to repair that section, right? And also installed a filtration system to reduce PFAS levels, okay? So original sampling indicated that there were some fluor chemicals in our fire loop, more commonly known as PFAS. Based on the compounds that we detected, we suspected that this was residual from an A triple F system, which is used as a firefighting foam or whatnot that we had in our plant that is no longer in use, okay? So at the time of the leak, we worked collaboratively with the South Dakota DNR to really create a supplemental work plan to really assess our site, which included working with BMU to monitor the municipal wells and to collect groundwater and stormwater samples, groundwater and soil samples, excuse me, at our site. So today I'm going to provide an update on that plan, what's happened since June or the April time period forward, the results of our assessments. I'm going to talk about some soil management plans that we have relative to construction work that we're doing at our site. And then lastly, some additional plans that we've developed in conjunction with the DNR. Okay. So a couple maps here and then some details down below. Kind of have the findings on the left side, actions kind of on the right side. The environmental monitoring report from BAR Engineering was submitted to the state and the city earlier this year. The two maps represent the findings and actions from that report. So the report was done by BAR Engineering. So on the left side, PFAS has been detected in shallow groundwater and on the right side in shallow soil. And the graph on the right, the pink areas represent areas where the detections were above the EPA screening guidelines for the groundwater. And on the right graph, the green represents where the soil is higher than the EPA guidelines, okay? All of the detections on the site were below the EPA guidelines that we had. So based on those results, really, you're now taking the following actions, which are kind of shown on the right side of the slide there. We're going to continue to take groundwater and soil samples across the site. We're going to be installing some new wells to get some additional sampling and then also conducting additional soil sampling. That plan that I'm talking about has been approved by the DNR and is underway at this time. Okay. So this map shows where we'll be doing some of our expansion at 3M. If you've been kind of past our site or whatnot, you can see a lot of earth that's been moved, a lot of construction that's going on. The black kind of dashed line represents kind of the outline of that construction. So that's kind of the shadow of that, right? So taking into account the expansion project and maybe any potential future use for our property, there's additional soil sampling and management going on at our site, okay? This includes placing excavated soil from construction on our property. That'll be located kind of where this pointer is, this button kind of toward the middle, and that'll be a slight mound or what we call a berm that we'll be placing on site. So any soil that we excavate will be placed on site within that berm, okay? Okay. Go to the next slide here. So beyond construction, we have the next steps based on the sampling that we've done so far. Again, this has been worked on with the city of DNR. We are going to conduct quarterly groundwater sampling from the wells that we've currently put in place. The dots that you see on this drawing represent the wells that we have within our land, right? We have existing wells. We're going to install and sample 22 new monitoring wells, which are also shown on the map. And then we're also going to keep collecting and evaluate soil samples and stormwater and surface water samples at our property. Results, as we have done before, we will report the results both to the state of South Dakota, the DNR, and we'll send a copy to the city as well. So we'll follow the current process that we have there. So nothing will change. Again, that work has started and will continue on this fall. We expect to have results from those assessments probably sometime next year, all right? So we're committed to continue to communicate. We'll continue to communicate the findings that we have and any other requests that come from the city or from the state. We appreciate the opportunity to provide an update as far as what we've done on our property and look forward to continue to work with the council and the city.
Does council have any questions for Jim at this point in time? Councilmember Avery?
Jim, I just have a comment and a question. I think you've been very good to work with and very responsible. And in this whole process, we have a comfort level with you. What we know, I guess, that's coming up is that 3M, the medical products division that's in Brookings is going to be spun off. You know, and I don't know what that means exactly. And that'll be those people that are here in Brookings and will be moving into a yet-to-be-named company, which I'm sure somebody knows what the name is, but it's not announced.
Sure.
Are we going to be dealing with 3M or are we dealing with the unnamed company or who do we deal with though?
We like you. Yeah, that's a fair question. You know, I suspect you're still going to be working with me here at the site. We'll work as the company rolls off. This is, Brookings is a healthcare site. I think 97% of our products go into the healthcare field. There's a couple peripheral ones that go in there, but 3M's kind of sorting out, moving products within its manufacturing sites a bit to kind of align products per sites that we have. And so you'll continue to work with me here in the site and the resources that we have to our disposal.
Is the healthcare division just Brookings? Is there multiple locations?
Sure. There's, I think, nine plants in the U.S. that are considered healthcare. There are some global plants as well that are part of the healthcare business. Healthcare represents about 25%. If you look at the overall sales of 3M company, healthcare is about 25% of 3M companies. We're about just over $8 billion in sales that we have annually that we'll have out of our healthcare facility, not here in the plant, but that's the overall healthcare business.
So we're dealing with a strong company. It's not like it's a startup or something.
Sure, correct.
Any other questions? I've got one. Oh, go ahead.
I have a question about the flow of water. So you have the arrows on that one map that show the surface water.
Sure.
So maybe with Eric being in the audience, he can talk about like how this may or may not impact the wells for the city and what the status is for that, for the sampling.
Sure.
So most of you know me, Eric Witt, Water Waste Water Manager at BMU. So the blue lines on that map are the groundwater flow contours. And so think of it like a surface map. Everything flows perpendicular to your topography. So underground, you can see that the plant is kind of on a knoll. So groundwater is flowing into town towards 22nd. It's flowing to the south, so southwest, southeast. And you can see it's kind of directing towards the Everest Pond on the east side there. So Everest Pond is the quarry on the other side of the road. So one thing I know about the geology is right about the interstate, on the sand and gravel that allow the quarries to be in that area, they're on the east side of the interstate. And somewhere right about the interstate, that sand and gravel formation changes to a till, which is silt and clays, heavier soils with a few sand seams in them. So there's a distinct difference right about the interstate where the 3M site is versus the quarry. And then as you get east of the quarry where our wellfields are, we're still in that same sand and gravel formation. So it looks like it's heading to the east, but I also know farther to the east, there's a more dominant groundwater pattern that comes down from the, that'd be the northeast and heads to the south. So I think with the additional wells that he's talking about, you'll see that the groundwater flow direction is going to bend. It's going to head from their site on the east side to that Everest Quarry and then move farther to the south. So our wells are cross and up gradient of this location, or at least cross gradient. I've reported that we've tested our municipal wells, I've tested our water plants. We were non-detect for all six forms of pending regulated PFAS compounds. So there's six pending drinking water standards coming up. And we were non-detect for all six in all nine well samples and both samples at the water treatment plants. So I think the additional work they're doing will continue to support what I'm saying, which is the groundwater flow from that plant is not a direct line to my wells. That's shedding off to the south, east, and groundwater flow over by our wells is more from a northeastern direction to this, kind of heading south. So I don't anticipate a direct geological connection to, from that location to ours, but that's the reason for putting in the additional wells and having BAR continue with the work they're doing.
Eric, I'm not familiar with the flow there, but is there even any culverts? Does the interstate pretty much cut off all that groundwater flow and just head south in the ditch?
Well, surface flow versus groundwater flow, two different things.
Right.
So culverts would impact, you know, surface flow, surface spill, rainwater runoff. The groundwater, depending on the depth and the geology, would potentially flow, you know, under subsurface, depending on the elevation of that groundwater versus the surface soils. So the interstate in and of itself would not necessarily be a groundwater flow barrier, but because of some of the soil compassion, action, we might see that in the additional monitoring well data that will be available at some point here.
Any other questions, comments from council?
If I can ask a quick question. What was your timeline again, Jim, for implementation of the wells and the start receiving the data from those wells? I believe you're going to implement 22, 11?
So we expect to put those wells in probably in the October, early November. That's what we're targeting right now. Some of those are on our property, some are off property. You know, we want to work with the city closely regarding those ones that are off property, but yet this fall before winter makes it much easier to put those wells in place.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is solid waste master plan, and I'll let John take this one over. John Thompson, our Public Works Director.
Good evening, council. John Thompson, Public Works Director. Back in 2022, I think it was July of 2022 before I was here, Jake had the forethought to go solicit a solid waste master plan. The city solicited several vendors. I think there was more than one applicant that actually came in. The panel selected HDR, Kate Bartlett, who's a, you are a senior solid waste.
I'm the national planning lead for solid waste.
That's right. You changed, didn't you? Yes, you did. So she's here to kind of fill you in and update as to what their findings are for this, over this last year. We've had several public meetings and kind of went through all the existing systems that we have. And now we have a nice, small, two-inch binder of a plan going forward showing our existing systems of where we should go at, and she will kind of summarize that for us. So I'll let you get, go for it.
All right. Welcome. Hi, thank you for having me here today, Mayor and Council. My name is Kate Bartlett, and as John mentioned, I'm with HDR, and I'm representing a robust team of individuals that worked on this project, from landfill engineers to hydrogeologists to air emissions specialists, to transportation and routing experts, to economists. We pulled together a robust team to really look at a comprehensive view of your solid waste system here in the city. So we're going to walk through things today, and I'm happy to answer questions as we're going because I know there's a lot of technical information. So let's set the stage. This is what the city charged us with when we were looking at what is important for your solid waste management plan. So number one was residential and employee safety, ensuring that materials get picked up from your homes and businesses safely, taken to your landfill, that your staff that are operating those systems come home every night after they come to work, and that your residents and visitors to the community are safe. We really wanted to work on public trust in increasing transparency in what's going on in your systems and engaging the public in that conversation and also being transparent with the public of what's going on and the why. A critical piece was also looking at financial stability. Is the system robust enough in how you're charging for services and fees, how you're looking at maintenance, how you're looking at upgrades to ensure that you save financially solvent and that you've got proper reserves as needed for as you're going through your programs? So that was what we were charged with and looking at your whole system. So kind of that big overarching umbrella, we engaged with the public. So we did a series of two meetings. The first meeting was really trying to understand where your public was at and thinking about the systems. What did they wish they had? Did they like your programs? It was one of the first public meetings I've been at where everyone, hands down, really likes your collection program, likes your landfill services, a lot of positive comments, which really goes to show what a robust and caring staff you have working on this system. That really came through loud and clear. There was increased interest from your residents in how can we do more around diverting of recyclables, thinking about what else is in the system. A big drive in interest in electronics recycling as a missing service here in your area. Also asking for, is there a better way for residents who are dropping off materials at the landfill to do that more safely so they don't have to go up on that working face and interact with commercial trucks? So we really heard a lot of good feedback, and that really helped us drive what initiatives and strategies went into the master plan that I may be sharing with you tonight. We then went back to the public in June and said, did you like what we did? We took your ideas, we put together initiatives and strategies around collection, landfilling, and finance, and the participants were really supportive and grateful that those thoughts that they shared were incorporated in the master plan. So I'm going to kind of walk through your system in three buckets here. That first bucket that we're going to really talk about is collection. So this is everything that happens at your curb. As when we talk about your public, this is the magic. This is your staff picking up yard waste, trash, and recycling and taking it to its proper destination, where they pick it up on time safely and it just goes away for your residents. So to do this analysis, we actually rode along with your staff. We followed behind your collection trucks, did interviews with your staff, took a look at how maintenance was done, those records, and really spent some time getting to know how things are really done here in the city. And with that, we came up with six key recommendations. So really, that first recommendation is looking at expanded preventative maintenance. Right now, your trucks are very heavily operated. They're all used that you have in your fleet with very little downtime and being up ahead of preventative maintenance. This is a really important piece for ensuring safety of equipment for not only your staff and residents. So it's a strong recommendation. A second recommendation we have is a faster replacement schedule for your collection trucks. So right now, your trucks are being replaced about every seven years, sometime longer, a lot longer in certain cases. We recommend that that comes back to more of an industry norm of five years. Now, we do fully recognize that truck availability has been a challenge, and so that isn't as easy as just placing an order for a truck. We know that. But a recommendation to get moving on a five-year replacement schedule. Also, taking a look at preparing for a replacement of your garbage carts, your trash carts, your assets that you really have in those collection pieces at every household. The average life of a cart is less than 20 years. Your carts are nearing their end of life. So preparing for that end of life in a way that is financially solvent, we recommend. The fourth recommendation is conducting a route optimization study. Fancy term for right now, how your collection routes are assigned, they're geographic zoned on a day, and a driver will be, here's your area, go pick up in that area. Your staff knows this area very, very well, but taking a look at route optimization would allow you to make sure that the routes are the most efficiently collected. There's, you can try and eliminate left turns for safety reasons, ensure backing in alleys or driving down alleys. So route optimization study really gets to efficiency of collection and safety. That fifth recommendation is consider decreasing yard waste collection frequency to once a week. I can honestly say I've never seen twice weekly yard waste collection in the Midwest, actually anywhere. So you are far exceeding national expectations for collection of yard waste. So that may be something you want to consider to drop to once a week collection, which still brings you within industry norms and meeting your needs of your citizens. And finally, adding an additional truck and driver to the collections fleet. Your fleet can barely meet the collections that it needs at this point. So with those, that would be our recommendations for collections. So financially, where are you at? And I think this is really important to look at from a collection side. So currently, your residents pay $18 per month plus tax for your all-encompassing services, so garbage, recycling, and twice weekly yard collection. Part of our study was really to take a look at how others around you are doing, wanting to make sure that you stay within other pricing, where do you, where do you sit at? So that's what this chart is showing you here on this table. So right now, 19, you know, 1917, that's your price with tax, is really in the middle of what folks are charging. And when you consider that you have twice weekly yard waste collection, they're getting a very, very good service for the fee that they're paying. Our recommendation after doing the financial analysis is that rates need to be increased in order to fund those capital replacement schedules, so your carts, your trucks, and to build that prudent reserve fund so that way you have what you need in order to continue operating this high-class system for your residents. Moving to the next part of our study, really looking at landfill operations. So here, this is where a team of engineers came on site to look at your landfill operations. And they looked at everything from how you're managing the compactors, how they go, how you're designing your sites, how you're maintaining equipment, how you're training your staff, really spending time with your folks to really get to know your landfill and really understand this asset that you have for your community. So here as well, we have six recommendations moving forward. The first recommendation is regarding installing a direct sewer line from the landfill to the wastewater treatment plant. So let me set the stage for all of you that are not in my world of landfills every day. So at a landfill, when there's moisture collected within that landfill cell, right now it's collected, and it can be recirculated by putting back into the landfill. So collected, moved, and if there's extra, then it goes via truck to the wastewater treatment facility. This is a very time-intensive and expensive process to move water via trucks. This can work when you're in a very arid climate or a smaller landfill. Your landfill's getting to a size you need to think about operational efficiency and safety. So installing a wastewater treatment line direct from your landfill to your plant would eliminate that step, that need of transporting of water via trucks, and really build your site so it can grow into the future and thinking about that. So next recommendation is to extend the life of the landfill by compacting the material more tightly. So when you think of a landfill, you really have a bowl, and we're putting material in that bowl. And the big pieces of equipment, the compactors, are trying to squish all the air out of that bowl to keep space in that bowl. Well, there's a couple different operational methods, such as how you move the waste around. How do you build the slopes of that bowl? How do you build those things that can give you some increased airspace life, increasing that asset value? So we recommend making those operational changes where you compact that waste more tightly so you can build, keep that useful life of your landfill. Our third recommendation is regarding a passive gas venting system. So your landfill is meeting all of the lineer requirements, all the air emissions requirements, but at a certain point, you get gases and airs in your landfill. And right now, you don't need to collect that gas. You don't produce enough to actually collect and capture for energy production. But if you include these passive gas venting systems, one, then the gas is directed. It knows where to go, so it's safely going there. You can monitor it, and if your cell gets to the site or they change the regulations, then it's easy to move to a more collecting of that gas system. So it's a next step in growing your site and ensuring your compliance. That fourth recommendation, this really gets back to what the public directly asked for, is increasing the public's comfort and safety at the landfill. And there's two different recommendations here. One is changing the signage at the landfill, looking at color coding, thinking about what those signs are so folks more easily know where to go at the site for their safety and comfort. We know that there's a lot of, oh, big equipment, we gawk and look. So how can we help people safely on the road and doing what they need to? That fifth recommendation is really increasing that citizen's campus, thinking about events for household hazardous waste material, thinking about where people can dispose of waste at the landfill that's not on the active working face, but in a safer... area for smaller cars, things like that. And that sixth recommendation goes back to maintenance, so replacing the equipment at its end of life and purchasing backup equipment, really making sure that you have what you need for resilient operation. One of the things that we also knew was important to the city were litter control. So we specifically took a look at litter in those operations out there and how, what does that do for, you know, how can we reduce the amount of litter? So recommendation one, adding fencing to collect wind-blown litter. Wind-blown litter is, is a problem, just you have flat grounds and windy conditions. So adding some additional fencing to catch that, really plastic bags, those type of materials, will help control the litter. The second recommendation is to rent or consider purchasing litter-picking equipment. Think large-scale vacuums that can go over areas and pick that. We do recommend renting that equipment first to see what works on your site and for your staff and operations, to see if that really does, it make improvements. That third recommendation is once again, a small shift in operations. So looking at your wind direction and speeds, and helping that direct how you do that day's operation, for which way you're pushing the waste on the active working face. And then fourth, and probably the most important, is you actually already have policies regarding tarping or covered loads coming into the landfill. They're not necessarily being actively enforced. So enforcing those policies that you have that requires loads coming in to be covered really helps with the prevention of spreading litter as people are driving to the landfill, not just actively at your site. One of the other areas that we were looking at with your landfill is really that piece around transparency. So if you, if you're looking at this map here, the bottom part of the left image shows where your current landfill operations are at. To the north of that, you actually have a planned expansion area. Our recommendation is that you go forward with permitting that, even though you don't currently need it for site spacing, as it's really best practices then for transparency. Then those neighbors all around that planned expansion know what's coming in. They're not surprised if a landfill expansion occurs in the next 10 to 15 years. It really does open that conversation, and it allows your conversation with your regulators to know where you're going as well. So our recommendation is that you do move forward with that planned expansion area So just like in collections, we also looked at how does your landfill compare to other landfills that are nearby? So at landfills, you're paying per ton. So currently, residents visiting your site pay $45 per ton for disposal of materials. Again, as you can see, when we compare against some of the others around you, um, you know, St. Cloud is up in that $97 per ton, most, you know, you're in the lower end of that average area. We are recommending that revenues need to be increased at the landfill to fund those capital replacements, those, you know, that big equipment, ensuring that you have extra equipment for your needs, your compliance requirements, and then once again, that prudent reserve, reserve fund to be able to operate and safely going into the future. Oh, sorry, I clicked around something. The other piece we wanted to do is take a look at how, how are your programs doing as far as diversion? So right now, landfill diversion is a critical path item for your community because it saves landfill airspace. That landfill is really an asset that you offer your residents and your community. And anything that could be diverted from that landfill then saves that airspace. So right now, across the United States, 50% of the materials that residents produce gets diverted from landfilling. So that's through recycling, yard waste programs, through your composting of yard waste programs, electronic materials, household hazardous waste. Brookings curbside, so not looking at everything coming your landfill, but your residents' curbside program is below that national average. You're around 30% diversion. You have robust collection programs. You have material, places that will take your recyclables and your materials here in the area. So our recommendation is that, how can we help the city residents know what they need to do so they can divert more? So our recommendation is increased education to help them understand what they're doing, to really lean into the programs that you already are having and funding. So in summary, the, the city is currently providing exceptional services at low cost compared to the regional communities. And some of that low cost is due to deferred maintenance and not necessarily having those prudent operating reserves. So there's a balance, which we understand. Your stakeholders and the public are satisfied with those services that you have and expect those services to continue. The current system does not provide for that prudent reserves for ongoing operations and including things such as an operating maintenance reserve fund, thinking about those capital replacement costs. And it's small increases in those tipping fees and service fees would still, would help you achieve those goals and still keep your rates lower than your neighbors and very much within industry norms. And these recommendations, we really, working with your city staff and your public, really focused on always coming back to those three critical points of safety, reducing risk, educating the residents in transparency. So with that... Just questions. Happy to answer questions. Oh, the roadmap did get, oh, okay. The roadmap did give your, okay. So this is your vision for the future, taking a look at how do we get from where we are now to where you want to go, knowing that this is going to take incremental progress to get you there, not making these steps overnight. So starting at the bottom left, you're looking at 20, in 23, 24, designing that leachate collection system, all the way up to in 2028, taking a look five years from now of how have you done on your master plan? Are you achieving your goals? Have you met your objectives and updating the plan? So with that, I would, happily take any questions.
Councilmember Specker, I know you got some questions.
Wonderful, ladies here. I, um, one question I have, there are some places that have different container sizes, and then people are charged. Do you know if that helps with diversion, increasing the percent diversion?
So councilmember, yes. So in the industry, we call that pay-as-you-throw. So they do offer different sized bins, and you pay a reduced, like if you have a 48-gallon cart, so that's about half the size of your carts that you have at the curb, you would pay several dollars less than if you have the same 96-gallon cart. There are trade-offs in those programs. Yes, they can create less waste, but if you have automated collection services, like you do here, you need your cart lids to close. And so if those carts are over full, or I've watched people like stand and squish things in them, then they can't be tipped on those tippers, and so people have to get out. So at this point, it was not a recommendation that we made for you all to be able to make that change.
And if you drive around during the collections days that we have right now, we are very lenient on people stuffing stuff into the, into the carts. The cart is already, the lid is already on the back, and there may be something four foot up already in that cart. You can put, we had different, um, we had three different sizes out in California. Would I say that it really helped on the recycling side? No. It helped on some of the disadvantaged communities that couldn't afford it as much. But it also, it's, the benefit really is, is just a smaller cart for the, for the person on the house. Picking them up is a struggle when they're smaller. And generally, if they're all the same, we're maintaining the same size. We don't have three different carts, meaning now we have 15,000 carts versus 5,000 carts could be three different sizes. So there's, there's pros and cons on both sides of that.
And one more question, would you know what it's going to be is on composting? And if you could talk about maybe that area, you know, is the benefits of that?
So right now, we, we allow the yard waste to come out to the landfill, recharge 24 hours a day in the summertime. You can drop that off out there, and plus we do two times pickup, which is uncalled-for anywhere, but that's what we do. And I'm going to say a little bit of my vision on that. We have such a large resource with SDSU and with the Ag Sciences Building and the Ag Sciences University. I would love to be able to collaborate with SDSU because they know, they have, we have the feedstock, but they know the consumers that could actually utilize compost. Mostly, if we talk about, in California, you have food waste. All the food waste is mandated by the state that you shall, each county and each jurisdiction, you shall have a program, even though we don't have processing plants and we ain't getting any money, figure it out. But that, that food, food waste, I can easily see us in a collaboration, being able to have a voluntary program to get ahead of the curb before legislation comes on board. And I, the, uh, the two women that I met at SDSU were excited about this, and I just think that's something that we just need to continue to foster and, and unify, but it's just getting time on that. Yeah, I'm on the same page with you, but we need to do something more, mostly for the food waste.
Thank you.
And it's not like inviting, inviting the OIA. I had a discussion with John earlier, Colorado State and the City of Port Collins have been working together for quite a few years on this. So we have examples in the U.S. that where it's been very successful, and we can learn from their mistakes.
Yep.
And I've been, been an advocate for composting since I, a little bit after I got on the council, especially when Holly got on and we talked, started talking more about sustainability.
The biggest issue there, just so everyone understands, is the state, right? Regulations allow this. It's all a process. It's finding those partnerships, but also getting legislation passed that we can move to actually do it.
Councilmember Tildenburn.
Um, thank you. So one of the first questions I had on my list too was also about composting. And as Mayor Meier mentioned, when I first joined, the council of composting was something that we had been discussing in my prior role as the Chair of the Sustainability Council. At that time, there were conversations happening between Brookings and the state to address those legislation issues. Do we know at all where the state's at with coming up with regulations for that kind of composting?
I personally don't. Kate probably does more.
I do. South Dakota, my understanding is South Dakota is waiting to see what's happening at the national level before they implement statewide regulations that would be more stringent than the federal level. So the federal level will be dictated by this year's Farm Bill, which does include stringent composting programs, including pilots and development of the legislation. So you can permit and do what you need to do so then you can start collecting. So I, we are seeing that federally moving and expecting it to happen in this next legislative session.
So there's got to be something in place already, and Colorado's doing it.
So actually, Mayor, I was at that facility last week in Colorado, attending the Colorado Solid Waste Conference. Colorado has more stringent regulations than the federal level regarding composting, and Port Collins has a food waste ban in your trash for its residents. So they've, but it's required bans at both the state and the city level to get to the programs that they have in place.
So can you explain, um, does the city have the ability to move forward with a program like that if we were to use the more stringent levels at the federal level, or are we required to wait for state guidance first?
At this point, you need state, you need permitting abilities to be able to do this. And really, please know, this was very much a robust part of our conversation internally. And you'll see in the report, we really focused on recycling first because you have already a program curbside. You have under contract a materials processing facility. And we've seen in our work across the country that unless people are recycling closer to that 50%, organics programs are not successful. You have to get people starting to train and learn and to divert through recycling first, and then that organics is that next piece. That's part of the reason that there's an update to this plan, looking five years out, so you can see if you can achieve some of these goals, some of these permitting requirements could change, so that way organics can really be leaned into in that next round.
My understanding has always been that Brookings has a really high recycling rate. Is that not what we found in our studies?
That's not what we found in the studies. Thirty percent. Thirty percent.
One thing, I'll make sure, councilwoman, this is the first time Brookings has ever done solid waste master plan. So this type of data analysis has never been available to us until Jake and John contracted this.
Um, I do have a couple of, sure. Uh, I think this one is more for our staff. One of the recommendations was to adjust our fees. When was the last time we adjusted our fees?
We adjust them annually. We look to review them. The only problem is, we always would adjust them based on our peers, not really on what the need is for our reserves, our program, and never on the basis of a master plan. So this is more of a scientific approach.
One of the other recommendations was planning for the replacement of our carts as they reach the end of their lifecycle. When that is typically done, is it done in a process where all carts are pulled and fully replaced, or is it as carts fall apart, those are then replaced?
Great question, and really gets to be an operational decision. So doing more full state, like, like a zone is replaced, or the whole city is replaced, ensures that you're not fixing broken carts. So as you get closer to the end of life, your repair costs increase exponentially. The amount of time that John's staff is out fixing wheels, fixing lids. So it gets to be that balance of when do you replace them? Most communities that have this asset, like you all do, for your full, for your full system, do a full sweep and replace everything all at once. And the cart manufacturing programs have programs where if you've got useful carts, they can go separate cells, there's recycling. So those carts don't just get thrown away, they go back into future carts. But it really does get to be a time where you want to be monitoring those costs of maintenance. And one of the tools that we created in this master plan is a financial modeling tool that John now has full access to, that he can be tracking where those maintenance costs are to help him and his staff understand where that tipping point is for replacement.
And we'll, Holly, what we'll probably do on that, we'll break it down into quadrants. And, because we wouldn't want to have everything at one point in time because of that's just expensive cost each year. So we'd look at how many carts can we get on a truckload and buy them in bulk quantities, and then we'd replace those through sections of town as it goes. And then that's just a standard that you put back in this financial tool. And I have to say this, the financial tool that HGR came with, we created one in County of Fresno, but I almost had to get my CPA degree to update it every year. This is, I actually even let, you know, give them an idea of what this looks like, is this is going to be extremely helpful for us to ensure that we're sustainable going forward. And we have a much better plan for replacement, what our costs are, what our plans are each year going forward, and we'll update it at the end of each year.
The last question I have, again, it might be for our staff, and that is, I think it was mentioned, uh, the disposal of hazardous items, household items, that sort of thing. A question that I've actually received numerous times and once even just in the last week is, where do folks throw away batteries? Just AA, AAA, where can they bring them?
And lithium. Yeah, that's, and that's, um, we need to, we need to come up with a better outreach program for all of them. We created a turning around directory. We used to have the Yellow Pages, but back here, we actually have the shopper that a lot of people use that actually lists for all these consumables, for these disposals, where do you put them at? Does oil is accepted? And a lot of people don't know that O'Reilly's will take oil. And they'll take oil and oil filter, oil's will accept recycled batteries. So we just, we need to do that outreach marketing program, and that's one of the, that's one of the recommendations that we have there too.
Do we have anywhere in town?
In the fire department takes lithium, correct? Yeah, the fire department, Pete is coming up. Pete is ordering, I don't think it's there yet, but is ordering a disposal, one disposal within town.
So non-rechargeable, non-lithium bat- So non-rechargeable, non-lithium batteries, do we have anywhere?
Right now, we're permitted to take them at the landfill, even though you should not, you should not do that. I do not like that idea. We're, we're permitted to take electronics at the landfill, which is unheard of in my eyes too. We, we need to do a better job on that. But we need to be able to provide the residents those avenues, where to go.
I would say that part of that is the recommendation of the marketing we've taken public in the master plan.
Councilmember, John, are you saying that you're gonna expand the citizens campus then to allow like you to take, you have an old chair or something, a one-time thing to get rid of it?
I, I don't know about for a reuse area. I love a reuse area. Monterey, California's got a really neat reuse area. I mean, you see grand pianos there and stuff like that. People could drop off and they'll come and take it. We have Habitat for Humanity here. We have a reuse store. This would be an expansion of, it'd be more of a public diversion drop-off so that when you come out there in your Civic or a small car and it's raining out, we don't want you to try to get up by the tipping face.
Yeah, that's more what I was talking about. I never have to go to that pit to get it.
We don't want you up by the pit.
I want my nails in my tires.
So yes, it'd be, it would be set up, so it'd be very easy for residents to just drive through the scale and then good signage to go to the lap for the residential drop-off. And it will lay that out as to either metal, household goods, or just trash in, in different bins there. And then we would take those and they either go off-site for recycling or to, or to the landfill, to the tipping face. But that would be the goal. Get everybody other than commercial off the tipping face.
Councilmember Dren.
I have a question about litter control. Can you quickly summarize kind of our efforts on litter control right now? How we talked about picking up litter in mass. Do we have a lot of staff spend a lot of time on that right now? Or would this just increase the quality?
I wish we had more resources that we could utilize for that. We need to look outside the box a little bit more on litter control as to other resources in town here that we could utilize. Either adult offenders or, which we do have those come out, but not, not very many. We did have a temporary part-time in the, in summer season, but that's all he really did was litter. He did from bypass out every day to clear that out. Cause like Kate had stated, we don't charge everybody the, the untarp fee, the tarping fee. It's politically, it gets a little bit hachy, but there is always, every day you're cleaning that, that avenue back and out there. And then he started from the outside of the landfill and moved in. But there is so much litter there. It's, it's gonna take continuous effort. One of the recommendations was to rent a litter picker. I've had several of those. I've never found one that works, but we'd be more than happy to take that recommendation and see if we can continue to find them. But yeah, it's, it's just resources to be able to get that. And then if you have a, we've changed, since I was here last year in September, the operations have changed drastically out there. We're, we're properly covered. We have, we have additional staff. So we don't have as much current, a daily blown litter onsite, but it's just catching up for the years and years that are within the fence line and that it's packed pretty, pretty thick. Our biggest thing is, at a landfill, I've always tried to do is just be a good neighbor. So landfills typically would try, I like to buy the land around the landfill, so we're our own neighbor kinda too, and make sure that hell stays clean and keeping the, keeping the access to and from the site claims is important. Because then that eliminates some of the not in my backyard and you get that a lot. When we start looking at household, house service waste or any type of remote drop-offs, we're gonna probably have a lot of fight on, I don't want this in my backyard because it stinks or somebody's gonna drop off a bomb and you know, there's a whole bunch of stuff that you have to go through there. But litter, yeah, that's just a daily thing. I don't, I would love to say that we had a crew of twenty or thirty volunteers come out on a, on a weekly basis to go pick up litter, but yeah, we don't have that. I think during the durachio last year, you did have wide a bit of letters and a lot of volunteers come through. But it's just a daily thing that you have to do at all landfills. We are, we have ordered, actually tomorrow night on, on the agenda, the approval for a bid for ten more bull fences. And these are large twenty-one or twenty-four foot wide iron structures with a, with a fence on them. And we get, when we have ten of those, we'll be putting up downwind for where we tip and that will catch a lot. And those are easier to clean out versus having to get across two or three fences and try to clean it out in the woods.
I have one more question. All of these recommendations for each category, are they all just included comprehensively on the roadmap? Or are they weighted differently on priorities? Or just a clarifying question?
They will be put into, into the budget. They will be approving those through the budget. These are the more important ones or, and they're kind of by priority as to how it's laid out there. We wanna make sure we get this lead check under control, number one, because that will be a long-term issue if we don't get it under control. Education on the recycling and disposal guide, very critical. And the improvements to the scale house is, is a little bit different. So we'd like to see out there is an ingress and a egress scale with the scale house in the center. Cause right now we've got, if you only have one person, it's really tough for them to take a break. So now they have one little scale house in the center that's, and it's maybe ten, twenty foot wide and it's wheel from in, in or out. That's could be an important one just for efficiency. And then of course, the route study and as we go through that permitting. Permitting to me is another very high priority. It will take a couple of years at least to get it permitted, but we need to start on it now so that we catch any upcoming legislation that would make it very hard to permit. Present county, we need to expand ours. We had a life in twenty fifty-seven, but at twenty-six hundred tons a day, you, you have to work on expansion twenty, thirty years in advance. And I don't know if we'll ever make it there. South Dakota's a little bit different on legislation. I'm hoping the permitting process goes a little bit easier, but it would be wise to get it done now. And then that would give us easily over a hundred years of life, which would be nice.
Kate, can you?
I just have one statement. One thing that we really didn't hit on here is, once again, this is the first solid waste master plan. You recommend every five years doing this. Just by doing this one, they're able to extend the life of the landfill, which saved you approximately one and a half, two million dollars?
One point six million dollars and added two point six years of life to the landfill just by the operational changes we're recommending in this plan alone.
And we will be coming later this year, maybe not later this year. I'd like to really get the Southwest manager filled out there and have a consultant come and give a gap analysis. We could actually give some training to the operators out there so that when we are compacting, we're compacting appropriately, five to six times across on a cycle and a pancake lifts versus advanced face. All that does, because this asset, the only thing we sell here is airspace. So the more efficient we can make that airspace, the longer it's gonna last. And that's really the bottom line point on a landfill. You, you sell airspace. You gotta compact it. Like Kate was saying, it's a little bold. You just have to compact it to the best of our ability.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, we move on to item seven, alcohol beverage licensing. Mike Foster's gonna give us a tutorial on, on the alcohol licensing in our city.
So yeah, alcohol beverage licensing in the City of Brookings. Going through some basics tonight, making sure you understand terminology, license types. What we can and can't do as far as being an municipality in this state of South Dakota. So to start with, I wanna start with just a simple on-sale and off-sale licenses. So on-sale, often referred to as retail. This is for consumption on-site, so the licensed premises of the license holder. For example, you'll think of a restaurant, a bar, maybe those video lottery suites that we've seen being installed in some of our convenience stores. Off-sale, referred to as package licenses, consumption off-site. Examples to immediately think of would be the municipal liquor store, your gas station, a grocery store, Walmart, Hy-Vee, those sorts of places. The city has control over certain licenses, but there's a lot of licenses out there that you may think of or care about or wonder about. Those are all state-issued and regulated. So here is just a small sample of those licenses to which the city council really does not have control over. The one that stands out maybe just to give a little heads up is, you know, we have two micro breweries in Brookings. Those breweries hold that on-off malt sale license so that they can serve and sell and consume on-site. So they hold a license. And as we get into this going a little bit more, that'll probably make more sense to you. So let's start out with malt licenses. You'll see on the top of my slides, you'll see an RV or other two, two-letter abbreviation. Those are abbreviations handed out by the state to identify the different licenses. So every business that holds a license, they're gonna have a two-digit letter followed by three, four, five, or six numbers. And that's how that business is identified with the state of South Dakota in their licensing system. So malt licenses, those are the most popular license held in the city. This is otherwise known. If you need a simpler term, just think of beer. This license also allows for the sale of South Dakota farm wine, which is wine produced from materials grown or produced in the state. So this does not allow for wine byproducts to be imported from out-of-state. This is totally in-state made wines. We have sixty-two malt license establishments here in the city. State law does not provide the means in which to limit them, so those licenses are unlimited by the state. There is a three hundred dollar fee and that fee is appropriate whether it's a new license or an annual renewal. And with malt licenses, half of that fee, the city retains, the other half is given to the state. So for every three hundred dollar license, the city gets a hundred and fifty dollars, the state gets a hundred and fifty dollars. And these licenses are issued from July first to June thirtieth. RW, on and off-sale wine licenses. So wine license is defined there as a beverage made from the fermentation of grapes or other fruit bases without adding those alcoholic beverages. We have twenty-six wine license holders in the City of Brookings. And this one as well is like malt. The state does not allow for limitation of these licenses. The fee for this license, whether it's new or renewal, is five hundred dollars. A bonus with this is the city gets to keep all of that five hundred dollars. We do not share that fee with the state. Wine licenses are issued with a ten-year operating agreement with a five-year midterm renewal. You'll see those come up periodically on your consent agendas. And these licenses are issued from January first to December thirty-first. Liquor licenses. This is a license type every business owner in Brookings would want to have if they were allowed to do so. So I want you to understand the history so you understand why not every business in Brookings can have a liquor license. A vote of the people was held back in April nineteenth of nineteen fifty-five on whether the city should hold the on-sale and off-sale liquor licenses. Now, what I find interesting is initially the election canvas for that election said the measure was defeated. However, there was only a difference of four votes in that count. So there was an automatic recount held by the Brookings County Recount Board, who then determined that the measure indeed did pass and the council approved that recount canvas in May of nineteen fifty-five. So the city has owned the on-sale and off-sale liquor licenses as of July first, nineteen fifty-five. That is our effective date. So moving forward on the liquor licenses themselves, there's multiple license types under the category of liquor. The first one I wanna talk about is the off-sale license, our PL license. This is the license held by the city municipal store. They hold the only off-sale liquor license the city has. As a reminder, off-sale licenses for the consumption of alcohol off-site. RL, oh, and that fee is two hundred and fifty dollars. That is set by the state of South Dakota and the city retains all of that fee and those licenses issued are effective January first to December thirty-first. RL is our unrestricted on-sale liquor licenses. These licenses are limited by population. That is given guidance to us in state law. The city currently has eighteen licensees. There is a fifteen hundred dollar annual renewal and the city gets to keep fifteen hundred dollars of that. If we had new licenses, state law states that new license fee cannot be less than one dollar per resident as of the last preceding federal census. The city council last established this fee in twenty thousand eleven, two thousand eleven, and the fee was set at twenty-five thousand dollars. A little bit about these on-sale liquor licenses and being restricted by population. So this state law gives us our municipal determination as to the number of on-sale liquor licenses that we can hold. So as it states here, we issued three licenses for the first thousand populations starting back in nineteen fifty-five and moving forward to where we, for each additional one thousand five hundred of population or a fraction thereof, we are able to add one license. So over the course of those last years, we are currently sitting at eighteen licensees. This slide also determines for you, helps you understand that the population is equal to the population estimates in the US Census Bureau. And we look at the decennial year and we look at even numbered years. So if you wanna go back to two thousand, here is just some data for you. I've identified the decennial years for you to kinda help you just kinda track it. Back in twenty, two thousand twenty-two, the population was estimated at twenty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-three. Staff will be watching to see what the twenty twenty-four population estimates are to be and those are usually released mid-year, July or so. So state law, from time to time, creates opportunities in which municipalities can addition, can issue additional liquor licenses. So these next liquor licenses that I talk about are a result of that legislation. So the first one up is convention liquor licenses. State law limits only two licenses to fall underneath this category. Our current license holders are Wilburts, the Comfort Suites University location and Park Place Incorporated, or better known as Brookings Inn, where the water park is. So licensees here must meet particular requirements. It must be a hotel, motel, convention facility, has to have a minimum of a hundred rooms for lodging accommodations, and it must have convention facilities with a seating for at least four hundred people. The license fee for this one as well cannot be set at less than one dollar per resident as measured by the census and the annual renewal fee is one thousand five hundred dollars. Our next category of liquor licenses is our full-service restaurant liquor licenses. This was enacted in the legislature in twenty-ten and the City of Brookings adopted in two thousand and eleven. This license requires a restaurant which a waiter or a waitress will deliver food and drink to a, on a printed menu, from a printed menu to seated patrons. So like fry orders, foodstuffs, sandwiches, hamburgers, salads, do not classify that restaurant as a full-service restaurant for the qualification of this license. We currently have two licensees that are using this license. The initial fee was set by state law at a million, minimum of that one dollar per resident as of the last federal census. Council passed a resolution in two thousand and eleven establishing this license fee at one hundred thousand dollars. State law, state of this fee was supposed to be in effect for ten years. So we are at the point that we can reconsider the fee associated with this license type. So I would like to mention to the council, if you would like to entertain revisiting the fee for these licenses, we will need a motion and a second from the council so we can proceed with a future council meeting to have discussion and possible action. Just a point of note for this license is, this license does have an annual, annual report requirement. They have to submit a report, which is confidential, that shows that sixty percent of their gross revenues have derived from the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages. If this requirement is not met, the license could be suspended or met, the license could be suspended or revoked.
Bonnie, I would, I would comment that initial one-hundred-thousand-dollar fee was a fee determined by, pursuant to state law. So that, that was not unlimited discretion. We had to look at the sale price for the, uh, uh, sale of, of the last operating agreement slash liquor license. At that time, the legislation was passed, if you follow me. So we didn't just arbitrarily, or the council didn't arbitrarily select a hundred thousand that was required.
Thanks, Steve.
Bonnie, when, it says that that's a full-service restaurant, and we only have two licenses. So are other restaurants operating in a different kind of license?
Other restaurants we have in town are, they have held unrestricted on-sale liquor license.
Okay.
So in twenty thousand thirty, or this year, twenty twenty-three, state legislator, legislature created another liquor, liquor license opportunity. It's called the on-sale municipality-owned facility license. So this is new to us and staff. As staff, we are currently working through implementing these licenses, and we'll be coming forward to the council with future action. Um, just wanted to give you a little bit of a briefing on this. Uh, so this license can only be used at municipality-owned entertainment venue, an event venue, an arena, a performance hall, theater, outdoor amphitheater, convention center, stadium, athletic venue, recreational facility, municipal auditorium, or a public convention hall. Um, this license must support the primary purpose of the facility. It cannot be used for the purpose of only providing food and beverage services to the public. And it does allow the governing body to contract with any person or entity for the person, for a person to provide those food and beverage services. So we do not have to staff our facilities with city staff. We can do outside contracts. The city will not be charged a fee for this license for whichever facilities we want to apply it. This license is not transferable, and video lottery is not allowed with this license. Council's had a busy year with many license transfers, several new alcohol licenses being issued. Um, state law requires all new licenses and transfers to be acted upon by the city council. The council must consider if the applicant is suitable to hold the license, and the proposed location is also suitable. I find it interesting that there really is no clear definition as how to define what a suitable person is or what a suitable location is. However, we can look in the state law in different parts and give us some guidance. Uh, so if you're thinking about a suitable person, that would be an applicant who has a good moral character, never convicted of a felony. And if it's a corporation that's applying for it, the managing officers must meet the same qualifications. A suitable location, uh, things that maybe the council would want to consider are the extent with minors frequent the business, uh, consider the type of business that is going to be operated, or the ability of law enforcement to police the location for potential parking and traffic issues. Also on the topic of licenses and transfers, um, overall, the council has to consider what is in the best interest of Brookings. The state law reminds us that we should keep in mind and keep track of individuals or individuals involved in corporations and the number of alcohol licenses that they hold. Um, so things that you would keep in mind are, you know, when we look at some of our, our heavy lifters and holding alcohol licenses in Brookings, you know, we would think of Deuces Casino. You know, they have five malt licenses, they have four wine licenses. Uh, we can think of MG Oil. They have, they have six malt licenses, a wine license and a liquor license. Or we think of individuals such as maybe Todd Voss, who has three liquor licenses, uh, six malt licenses. Um, so we have some heavy lifters in town. So we, what we would do is malt, since that's unlimited, that would change, you know, frequently as licenses come and go. So we would need to do and stay on top of that map. Wine would be the same way, being unlimited. Liquor's fairly easy to determine. Um, Todd Voss, of course, is the one that holds three different liquor licenses, but that still falls underneath the threshold of one-third of those licenses Um, we've done lots of things with video lottery this year. We had a study session a while ago on that. Um, this is just in here, just as a reminder. So, um, as you use this document, you know, for future reference for yourself, you have this information available to you. So this is a good reminder of things to consider when we have those video lottery portions that, requests that come forward with on-sale alcohol licensing. Um, the biggest takeaway from this slide would be that existing video lottery licenses cannot be denied, renewed, or transferred. So the only time that a denial can happen is at the time of the original issuance. State law does give us the option to issue special one-day alcohol licenses. Um, in other communities, they call them special events licenses. Um, this is limited by applicants. So our applicants for these licenses can either be a current license holder, or they have to be a qualifying organization, which is either a civic, charitable, educational, fraternal, or veterans organization. Um, we, the city does have a fifty-dollar-per-event day fee, and we do go through different things as far as if it's a public hearing and council action, or if it's just a action that can be placed on the consent agenda. Um, so just a couple of quick examples. So if we had a current license holder wanting to hold on a privately-owned event in a facility, so such as most recently you approved a mosaic wine bars event to be held with a social event. This would fall under that first category, public hearing and council action was held. Um, the next example I have for you is a qualifying organization holding an event on a publicly-owned facility. A good example of that would have been the summer when we had the Brookings Firefighters host their annual street dance on a public street. So that's a public facility. Um, so just wanted to give you a couple of examples so you can apply how we apply this when we get requests and information in the city clerk's office. And another, another quick thing is this is, we've had a lot of questions this year regarding, um, what is the license premise for these temporary alcohol licenses? On the application that they submit, they do state it's going to be Third Street or Fifth Street, or it's going to be in this building or this entity. They provide us that description, and that becomes the license for the event for what the alcohol sales. We are reminding our event organizers, our alcohol licensees, that if they are part of a special event, it is both their responsible responsibility as an alcohol licensee and the business owner and or an event partner to make sure that no open container alcohol is coming into their event, and no open container alcohol is leaving their event. Um, all alcohol sales and consumption must be taken on that license premises. Hours of sales and consumption. Um, so basically, it's pretty black and white. No alcohol sales, certainly no consumption can be had from two AM to seven AM daily. That's seven days a week, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days of the year. Um, state law doesn't allow municipalities to do some restrictions, whether it's Sundays, Christmas Day, or Memorial Day. You'll see here that the city has not taken any action to restrict sales of alcohol on Christmas Day, but in city code, you will find that we have limited Memorial Day sales and consumption to those providers listed there. It's our liquor and wine operating agreement holders, it's our on-off sale malt beverage licensees, or on-off sale wine licensees, and the municipal off-sale licenseee, which would be our liquor store. Now, Sunday sales do have a little bit of, of unique requirements here and there for sales and consumption. So Sunday sales, um, with our liquor and wine operating agreement holders, those holders are limited to having the sales of food. So they must have a restaurant facility with a seating of at least fifty patrons. Um, and then for those malt and wine license holders, they can have sales from ten AM to midnight for consumption on-site. Now, we do have some different limitations for sales and consumption on Sundays, off-site or packaged sales. Uh, those are limited to after seven AM for those malt and wine license holders, or anybody that holds a particular special event off-sale package license. Oftentimes, with sales and consumption, the hours of business and when you can do things, there's some confusion when it comes to video lottery play. So I just wanted to, to share with you all that since video lottery is tied to on-sale alcohol licensees, so that's on-site consumption, video lottery play runs with that. So there would be no play between two AM and seven AM every day of the week, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days of the year. Does that make sense? Any questions on that? I know that can be confusing.
Bonnie, with that, with that statement, on Sunday, say, uh, for instance, uh, gas stations got a video lottery suite in it. Are they only allowed to run the team between ten midnight then?
Correct.
So nobody can play from seven to ten?
On Sunday mornings, correct.
All right.
Uh, license renewals. Every now and then you'll see in memos, when we go through our annual licensing process, you'll go through and you'll see, oh, there's a statement regarding compliance checks. Well, um, we're, this is something new that we've been doing the last couple of years. We've been providing that history of compliance check passes or failures, um, because we do have to take into consideration and handle those annual renewals differently, especially if a compliance check was failed. Um, we do need to do a public hearing on those. Um, so separate council action needs to be taken. And during that time, the council has the ability to ask that business licenseee, what are you going to do to keep this from happening again? Was it a one-time thing? Was it a particular employee? Is that employee still with you? What training did you ask that employee to participate and get licensed with? Um, so the council always has that option. These will not be put and mixed in. You will clearly know on your council agenda that these are renewals for licensees that failed the compliance check. These are our state laws that talk about the compliance check. Just a couple of things I want you to know is that the Brookings Police Department does all of our compliance checks. They just do it, I have no idea. Our office, city offices don't know that they're doing it. They just handle it, and they provide us reports after the fact. Um, compliance checks cannot be conducted more than once in a forty-eight-hour timeframe, and we cannot revoke or suspend those licenses if the licensee has less than two violations in the previous twenty-four months. We get really concerned if we have three. That's kind of our red flag. They have three offenses or failures within twenty-four months. I just wanted to talk briefly on the whole license suspension relocation. To my knowledge, the city of Brookings has never done this to an alcohol licensee. So we do not have a written process, but I would work closely with the State Department of Revenue if we ever had to cross this bridge and actually go through something like this. I just put this in there for your information. Alcohol markup percentages. Um, as you remember, the city applies markers on the sale of all of our alcoholic products. All of that alcoholic billing is held and handled through the city finance office. Uh, Brendan McCracken is the employee that currently handles all of that. She does an amazing job. Um, so you'll see here that we've got ten percent markup on our malt beverages, whether they are on-sale, off-sale, or manufactured and sold. And then we have eleven percent on liquor and wine. Video lottery, just a brief one here, um, talking about the licenses that can, can have video lottery authorization. So that's our malt and wine. Uh, we cannot make any determination about video lottery and liquor licenses. The state has made it clear that we cannot have that authorization to limit. But there are liquor licenses, and talking to the Department of Revenue, that cannot hold video lottery. These are those exceptional new licenses. So it's our convention liquor, it's our full-service restaurant liquor licenses, it's our packaged liquor license, and it would be the new municipality-owned facility liquor licenses. Those are not able to have video lottery on-site. So what you will see, if a liquor licensee who held any one of those licenses prior to the council's ordinance limiting video lottery authorizations, you would see these businesses maybe pick up an on-off sale malt license or an on-off wine license in order to have video lottery on-site. So, because they can have more than one alcohol license in their license premises. This slide summarizes earlier council action with the approval of ordinance twenty-three-zero twenty-zero, and this is limiting the authorizations for video lottery except by population. So we are currently maxed out with our thirty video lottery authorizations, um, until we reach a one-thousand-population increase. Um, to date, there is currently three-hundred-and-thirty-four video lottery machines in the city of Brookings. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Questions, comments from council? Council member Tildenberg.
Um, so, um, on some of these slides, it mentions kind of who, like, how the fees are set, but some of them don't necessarily outright say this fee was set by the state. Are all of the fees that were mentioned set by the state, aside from the hundred thousand dollars that, that we mentioned?
Yes, they are identified in state law.
Okay, the rest of them are state. Um, on the, um, on the license for the liquor store that the city holds, um, we are limited to one licensee, correct, for that, for that particular?
For that off-sale license?
The, right, that the, um, liquor store holds, or are we not?
They, they hold the one license we have, though I'm not sure how that would apply if, like, say we wanted to do a satellite store elsewhere in Brookings.
We could have multiple locations of our, but they would be municipal locations.
Yes.
Um, uh, kind of going back to fees, one dollar per resident, that is a state statute, correct?
Yeah, we cannot charge less than that.
Okay. Um, if, you mentioned the new, uh, license, the municipality license. Um, I assume that one of the, um, locations in town that would be able to utilize that would be the Dakota Bank Center, um, if we get to that, that point. If we were to do that, would that then open any licenses that are currently restricted by Hunter?
Unfortunately, Brookings doesn't benefit from that, because we do temporary on-sale liquor licenses for the Dakota Bank Center. Um, state law allows us to issue those for every fifteen days. So we set their licenses aside every January so they know, this is my license for these fifteen days, um, and so on and so forth. So this would eliminate and allow savings in staff time, because we wouldn't have to do that.
Sure. Um, and then, uh, the last question I had is that, um, it stated in here that, uh, an existing video lottery license, as we know, cannot be denied, uh, renewed or transferred based on the criteria that was, um, kind of outlined on this slide that presented that information. Um, an earlier slide talked about, uh, granting the, um, the alcohol license to, um, I can't remember that, what, uh, oh, good moral character, never convicted of a felony, um, those kinds of things. If, if the transfer that were to happen for that alcohol license, if the person then receiving the transfer of that license fell within, if it was someone convicted of a felony, let's say, would that then prevent that transfer of the, uh, video lottery license to that?
Hmm, that's a great question. I never thought about that. I'm gonna have to get back to you on that, because I'm really not sure.
I think they'd have to, yeah, they'd have to be eligible for a video lottery in the proposed location.
Sure.
So the transfer, he would have to be eligible. And if they don't hold a, uh, you know, a liquor license or any other type of alcoholic beverage license, they wouldn't be eligible for, for that video lottery.
So when we are granting these licenses, are we then, at some point, is there an evaluation happening, uh, both at the initial application and/or at the time of, of a request to transfer, are we looking into whether or not the individuals a felony or?
Yes. Every time we have a transfer, a new license, we do a background check. We do background checks even with every annual renewal.
And do we do background checks of the managing officers of corporations that must also meet those qualifications?
We do. It's not only the manager, but it's the officers as well. Thank you.
Council member Spector?
Can you talk about how SDSU does or doesn't fit into this, where they fit in?
So, yeah, SDSU is, is a wonderful critter, for, for lack of a better term. Um, so the Sodexo holds through McCrory Gardens Educational Center an on-sale malt and an on-sale wine license. So when they want to have events at, let's just say, the stadium, Sodexo works with me and applies for a temporary alcohol license for the Dana J. Dykow Stadium. And so then they get their licenses issued that way for, could be the stadium, it could be the art museum, and so that's the process we do to cover SDSU general.
Right. And then the alumni center itself?
So the Alumni Center Foundation, they're So, the Alumni Center Foundation, they're, they are a public, they are a private entity. They are a nonprofit. So, for them, they have to partner with an existing licensee or an alcohol licensee of sorts to have their events. And so, that's their means of obtaining that temporary alcohol license.
Councilmember Duran, did you have a question?
Yes, being honest with her. Bonnie, can you remind me of when a business is sold that holds a liquor license, does that automatically trigger a transfer to a new owner, or what happens with, or any of those licenses for the business?
So, yeah, so if we have a licensee who wants to transfer their license to someone else, there's a whole application process that they must fill out, there's new forms, a background check, all of that stuff is done, and then it comes to council for approval and action. A transfer has just a hundred and fifty-dollar fee, so they're not paying the grand fee that would be applied with a new license. It's just a hundred and fifty-dollar fee, of which then the council can make the determination if you want to approve or deny that transfer.
And then, not to put you on the spot, so it's okay if you don't have a sense here, but do you have any context of why they limit on Memorial Day and Sunday?
I do not know. That's been city code for a long time. Do you have any?
It's tied to state law, so, you know, it started with a more restrictive state law that was changed over time, but those are the key dates that state statutes limited sales.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. So, I guess I'll open up the questions and comments from the public now. I know a former mayor would like us to make a few votes, make comments.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Tim Reed, I'm here as the director of the Brookings Economic Development Corporation, and I would ask you to consider lowering the price of the restaurant licenses. As was stated in the presentation, the ten-year moratorium on changing that, you know, is up, and so it is something that you could change. The city council here put together or had a new master plan for economic development put together, and one of the strategies there is to develop a new retail and restaurant attraction plan. Part of that plan, if we're going to attract some new restaurants, is going to have to be having those restaurant liquor licenses available. And a hundred thousand dollars is pretty steep for if we're trying to attract those restaurants to come in. Now, and also, while it's not a direct goal, the expansion and growth of businesses, we also have to consider that. I've been working with a business that is very interested in having a restaurant liquor license, so they'd like to grow their business, they're a current restaurant, they'd like to grow their business, and the hundred thousand dollars, I think it's hundred thousand dollars plus, price pay is just too much for a business. And so, it kind of puts them on an unfair, you know, playing field that they are not allowed to have liquor because of the high price of it. I also want you to think about that local entrepreneur. We've got somebody here that, I'm not, I'm just saying that we could have somebody here that wants to start a restaurant, and you think about a hundred thousand dollars and what it costs to start a restaurant, you know, a hundred thousand dollars to have a liquor license, you know, could be make a, make or break kind of situation for them to actually start that business. It'd be just great to have more restaurants in Brookings. It's something that people are already asking for. Have you noticed that ten-year lock on the price of them? That was put together by the legislature to give time for those that do have the standard liquor license to understand that there would be more licenses available with these restaurant licenses. So, I would ask that you consider lowering the price of the restaurant alcohol licenses. Thank you.
Bonnie, or Tim, because we have two of those now, but there's no limit on how many we can have?
Correct.
So, the state will allow us to issue as many as we can? Are we restricted to that, a dollar per person?
Right, the fee cannot be less than one dollar per resident.
So, twenty-five thousand, we could, that would be the least we could charge?
That would be the least.
Okay. But we could issue, that new restaurant that wants to come in, we give them, I mean, there's no, we wouldn't have to take it away from anybody else, or there is?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Specker.
How was this hundred thousand set, or why?
State law gives municipalities the option to set the fee. They tell us what the minimum is, but we can set it to what we want.
What was the original thinking of setting it that high?
Well, it was purely the workings of the legislation that established this restaurant license at the first, at the outset, and so in order to provide somewhat of a grace period or, you know, a little bit of a competitive protection for existing licensees, the statute said each municipality that wants to issue a restaurant license at the outset, right when that legislation was passed, needs to look at the most recent sale of an alcoholic beverage license in your community and determine what the sale price was.
Oh.
And so, while we didn't really fit neatly into that legislative scheme, because we hold the operating agreements, so we hold the liquor license, because we're a local option community unlike Sioux Falls, we still had to use that same mechanism to determine the minimum price that could be set for a restaurant license or fee, and a hundred thousand was what we determined based on the sale.
Just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, the similar license that we currently provide would be an on-sale liquor license, is that right?
Right, we consider that unrestricted.
Sure, and the cost on those is the one dollar per person?
In 2011, council put the fee for an on-sale liquor license of unrestricted at twenty-five thousand dollars.
And the one that we're discussing now, that, we couldn't set that at twenty-five thousand, because that would have to be at the one dollar per person?
Right, because as Steve said, the minimum is a dollar, but we had to base the fee based on the last sale.
So, now, you could set it at twenty-three nine ninety-three at a minimum?
Sure, and the other on-sale liquor license would remain twenty-five thousand?
That one could also be twenty-three nine ninety-three.
That one could change as well.
Oh, we could.
Council can take that action to change that as well.
So, that hundred thousand is just a really anomaly with the courts and the legal process that went on?
It was.
Typical of what one is sale for here.
Well, it was, it was really a statewide impact, so each community that wanted a restaurant license had to look within their community for a sale in order to determine, you know, what that price for that license would be. And so, Sioux Falls looked at their most recent sale and had to use that factual information to set the fee. That's what the state law says.
Some of these cities were paying over two hundred thousand, or just having to set it at two hundred thousand, because the last liquor license that was sold went for that much money. And so, I guess we could consider self-portionate versus some of the other cities that were in state of the code at the time.
It was certainly a challenging decision for the council, because you were faced with the facts of what was deemed to be the last sale in Brookings of a liquor operating agreement, and so that was the price that was determined.
I have a quick question, clarifying question, between the on-sale and the restaurant, the full-service restaurant. I guess I'm not getting the difference.
Kelsey, would you mind coming up so that the microphone can get you out of that hole and state your name?
Kelsey Doom, Chamber of Commerce, thank you. I guess I just need clarification between the on-sale, we have eighteen licenses here, limited by population, and the full-service restaurant. So, I just understand it, I've been texting with Kevin here, Kevin holds Pints and Courts, he has the on-sale, he also serves food. Great restaurant, if you haven't been, downtown Brookings. And then, the full-service restaurant, why wouldn't this new restaurant coming in just do the on-sale?
So, the on-sale, we consider those unrestricted. There's not a license, there's not a food requirement that they have to meet, there's not a restaurant with a minimum number of seats for patrons that is needed, okay? But with the restaurant license, the restaurant on-sale liquor license, that one has those restrictions tied to it. You have to have a particular waiter and a waitress, a printed menu, seating for so many people, and a percentage of your sales, sixty percent, has to come from food and non-alcoholic beverages.
And there are no unrestricted on-sale licenses available at the present time?
Because those are.
Based on population.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I've got a question on the renewal requirement. So, a restaurant has one of these licenses, and then it turns out their food sales aren't as high, or they're not meeting those thresholds, is that then a council decision on what happens with that, or is it automatically revoked?
It would be a council decision if you wanted to suspend them and give them a grace period in which they can redo their platform, their sales, whatever, maybe their point-of-sale system, was it recording that activity? Or you can revoke it. We would obviously need to consult the state, and we would need to consult with the Department of Revenue as to what steps we would exactly have to follow, so as it's, we're honest and transparent in our process.
But because, you know, that sixty percent requirement is set in state law, you know, we would enforce that requirement as a state law.
Anybody else in the gallery have questions, comments? Come on up. State your name.
My name is Kevin Robb. I live in Brookings. I would ask and recommend you guys do not lower the cost of a full restaurant license, because it would adversely impact those current license holders that had to pay the full fee and current license holders. It is part of the purchase price if someone is buying an existing business, that is factored into all the business sale, and the fee is way more than a hundred thousand dollars. If you were looking at Sioux Falls, Rapid City, anywhere else, the cost for a full ser, restaurant liquor or liquor license would be considerably more than that. So, I just want you to look out for current restaurants and license holders, because I think sometimes, I don't want to get off the topic, but we have this grand vision of, oh, we'll bring in so-and-so, or bring in a big company, or big restaurant chains or something, and one of the reasons I think this town is great is there's a lot of independent, family-owned, local restaurants, and not just a chain at every strip mall, like we're in Scottsdale or something. And I'm worried that we're getting close to turning into Bozeman. So, that's all. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Thanks.
Councilmember Duran.
I have a clarifying question. So, since the fee is only effective for ten years, do we have to have a discussion regardless?
You can leave current legislation as you have it now, or you can make a motion to have discussion to determine if you want to leave it as it, or if you want to entertain a different price.
I have a question for him.
Yeah?
For Kevin. So, according to this, there's two restaurants in Brookings that have this full-service license, but all the other ones are on the other type of liquor license that didn't have to pay the hundred thousand.
Oh, we had to pay way more.
He purchased his business from another business that held it, so you might explain that, Kevin.
So, when I purchased Pints and Courts in 2019 in the summer, and when, and part of that purchase was the transfer of said liquor license from the previous owners to myself and my wife, and in negotiating the price, that liquor license was factored in as part of, not only did we look at the revenue, the, all the other financials, but as an asset, so to speak, the liquor license is factored in, and if I wanted to, I could sell that liquor license for considerably more than a hundred thousand dollars tomorrow.
And that's because those are the ones that are limited by population.
And then, the restaurant licenses are also, like, there's, you make, like, good margins on liquor in a restaurant, so any restaurant would want that, and a couple of them already paid that hundred thousand, and I guess some rest, like, I guess selling a hamburger doesn't count as a restaurant, so.
What they got clarified in Steve, you or Bonnie, even though if he, Kevin decides to sell some business in the future, that he's got transferred the liquor license, it's still up to council whether or not that license actually is granted. It's not up to Kevin. Kevin could sell, sell a department's business, the last action happens if he recounts. Just to confuse things a little more.
Can I ask a quick question? Has a transfer ever been denied if the person did not have a criminal record or some sort of shady accounting?
Yes, because Casper's wanted to transfer the liquor license out to Carpy's, and the council just voted no.
Yeah.
Because I had Bonnie look that up for me.
Was there a reason? Or did we just?
I don't think they just, they just chose not to do it, because it was, it was changing from one owner to another owner at a completely different site, completely different business. And the, and the previous one that held the liquor license operating agreement was not going to be part of the other business.
So, they were trying to move, they were moving from one to another?
Well, but just, just the operating agreement was, nothing else moved with it, and that was the reason why that didn't get transferred.
But is someone trying to sell a business, like, say, Pints and Courts, not that it's for sale, but if at some point in my life I'm trying to sell, has it ever been denied?
That would be Bonnie.
If someone wants to take over Pints and Courts, and they keep them in, you, they don't, that's up to them, but it's staying in the same building on Main?
That'd be up to the future council.
But has something like that ever been denied? If it's in the same building, and the same person has been, the new person's been, from the historical, I don't know that it has, but regardless, that's up to the future council, no current council, fine future councils if that had ever. Well, no, I was just wondering if it's ever happened?
Not that I'm aware of. Of course, we could do something and try to figure out if it ever has been, but that would be very time-intensive.
All right, so, we'll just kind of finish up for tonight. We'll look at next week's meeting on the twenty-sixth. We've got some sets agenda items in there, some of it's got to do with snow removal, assault contract, presentations from SDSU, there's a proclamation, one change order. We do have three first readings now, and then we'll have the second reading of the three first readings we had in the last meeting. Other business, we got a tap grant application, and then accepted the soft waste, or the solid waste master plan. That being said, is any council member willing an item put out in the future at this time?
I'm just wondering if there's any interest in having a future conversation revisiting Resolution 9811, service restaurant liquor license.
Is there a second to that?
Was that a motion, or?
Well, it's got to be a motion in order for us to go each other. Second? All right. Let's just vote on it. No sense having discussion.
Don't we have discussion, actually? Because I would like to. Well, the discussion I would just like to have is, if we are to revisit it, I would also like to revisit the cost of the liquor license that is similar, because I think it makes sense to consider whether or not they should be set the same.
Consider that an amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? Please call roll.
Rostenson?
Aye.
Specker?
Aye.
Tildenburn?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Motion for German?
So?
All those who favor say aye.